And on the air and so on, and it's just really nice to be here, and I appreciate it. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, this evening present are Mr. Slavin, Mr. Tropeyano, Mrs. Whiteside, Mr. Titlebaum, Town Administrator and Town Councilor.
All right.
Mr. Holmes is absent due to family illness.
Okay, all right, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, and Winner, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) (inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements?
Hi.
Hi. Uh, Don? Don's not on the agenda.
He's not on the agenda.
Yeah. Okay, um, could I have announcements, Mr. Titlebaum?
None, I think the comments I have will come during the ears on reports.
Okay, Mr. Slavin?
Last Saturday, we had the All-Star game for the Cape Cod League. It was extremely well attended, there was well over 5,000 people. You had scouts from all over the country, you had a large group of very talented players. And what was really kind of nice about the whole thing at the end of the day, this organization, there was trash thrown down below the bleachers as always at a ballgame. When they left that place, there wasn't a paper anywhere. They took care of it, and they handled it all on their own. I'd like to thank them very much for that. On another note, which is kind of sad, we have a gentleman owns a piece of property on Main Street. He's basically, we have the old Jack Nelson property, which is the old Franconia Fuel, the fish store, et cetera. He's also a volunteer in this town, who is on the planning board, also a CEDAR. And sometimes, Sunday night, someone decided to tag one side of his fish market building, causing probably $3,000 or $4,000 worth of damage to brand-new vinyl siding that was put on the building. I'm extremely disappointed in whichever resident in Wareham took, thought it was funny to do this. I'm even more disappointed that it took probably an hour to an hour and a half minimum to do what he did, and it was so visible that someone had to see it, yet none of us citizens would step up and report to the police what happened. It's really extremely discouraging. We all have put a lot of hard work into this town, and someone like that who's a volunteer and everything else, it's just not right. I had MPO meeting, basically, today, I won't get into that now. The other thing that really worked well, the clam bake, Wareham Community Associates, which raises money every year for scholarships. Last Wednesday, we had a clam bake, I think we had a largest crowd, about 230 people. Again, very well done. We have to thank Zekko Marine for providing the facility. And the other thing would be, the council and aging had a barbecue last week. Seniors had a really great time, people came in that were not involved with the seniors to be there, give them company, and just make it a nice event. I ask people, again, when they see a CEDAR event, please step up and go to the events, it helps everybody, that's it.
Okay, Ms. Whiteside?
Yep. This weekend, the Pan Mass Challenge, we'll be riding through Wareham as it has every year. Pan Mass Challenge is probably the most successful one-person-started fundraiser there is in the United States. There are three more Lands End concerts. July 30th, at the library at 4:00 PM, to benefit the library. July 31st at 8:00 PM, at St. Gabe's Church in Marion. And August 1st at 5:00 PM, at Church of the Good Shepherd, to benefit the Toby Hospital. The music that you would be hearing is worth 150 bucks a ticket if you were to go to Boston or anything like that. (inaudible) string players as well as a pianist. I urge you to devote its donation only. The Big Brothers Big Sisters program at the Child and Family Services is looking for mentors from Wareham to join and become role models for the youth in their community. Big Brothers and Big Sisters organization's mission is to change children's lives for the better, forever. The Big Brothers Big Sisters fill a critical gap by emphasizing strong social bonds in children's lives and by providing positive a belt to support children in need. You can go on the website and be able to sign up. If you really want to know what to do with those bottles and cans that you pick up every day in the morning, Onset Association Beautification Committee is having a refundable bottle and can collection on Monday, August 3rd, and August 24th. Please bring the cans and bottles to the Dudley Brown Square between the hours of 8:00 and noon, rain or shine. You can also bring the bottles to the Liquor Barn at 150 Main Street in Buzzards Bay and tell them it's for the OBA beautification. The first group of people to bring the trash bags will receive Wicked Island clam stuffies until the supplies run out. A summer reading program at the Wareham Free Library is continuing. The programs are put on for the kids, and there are people who read to the kids. It is sponsored by Makepeace, Friends of the Wareham Free Library, Wareham Library Foundation, the United Way of Greater New Bedford, and the Wareham Public Schools. The new library hours, and I urge you to attend, apparently Spiny is really, really busy. Main Library is closed on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. It is open Tuesday and Thursday from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and open on Saturday from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Spiny Library is open Monday 9 to 2, and Wednesday 9 to 2. So basically, you have five days of library, which is fabulous. The Oak Grove Cape Verdean Cultural Center, Inc., presents the annual pre-festival reception and dance honoring Dr. Dana Muller Faria, the President Emeritus of Bridgewater State. Friday, August 7th, at the onset VFW. Donations $20 for ticket information, call Marion Rose, 208-295-8614, or contact the VFW. And then I have two ways of announcing this one. The onset Blues Festival is this Saturday, August 1st. Alan spilled on this back, sorry, Alan.
I sweated all of that.
What?
I sweated all of that.
Oh, you sw- okay, sorry.
Sorry about that.
At 10 o'clock, Lloyd Thayer will be at the gazebo at noon to 1:00. I don't know what that says, but the lineup is on the flyer, that's what it says. Rosemary Baby, Rosemary's Babies Blues, Johnny Hoi and the Bluefish, Fat City Band, Johnny Barnes and the Nightcrawlers, and then Lloyd Thayer. Tickets are $30 at the gate, $25 in advance, and they are available at Lockwood's Architects, 219 Onset Avenue, right across the street. Bananas at 329 Cranberry Highway. They're online at onset.bloosefestival.com. There will be 50 merchant vendors and eight food vendors available. It's going to be a great day, because I know it's going to be sunny, so enjoy.
That's it? Okay, I just have one thing. Steve isn't here tonight, and he's going through a difficult time with his family, and he wouldn't say or ask for this, but I'm asking you to keep his family in your prayers and in your thoughts as they're going through a difficult time, okay? Please, thank you. All right, next up is a citizen's participation. Anybody here to speak to us this evening? Come on down, right, yeah, the microphones are at the two tables, so.
(inaudible).
That's okay.
Alan has this thing about litter on the side of the road, so it's not uncommon to pull over and get a bag and go pick up trash for him. I found this on the side of the road. I just like to have people know, what you litter is public. So Amy, who lives on Swiss Beach Road, had two prescriptions filled. I now know what she has for drugs. I now know where she lives. I have her home phone number, and I just hope that the side effects of diarrhea was not too bad with these drugs.
(laughing).
So please don't litter. A couple years ago, I picked up a, a, a stud for someone's pay, had a social security number on it. Boy, could you do a lot of damage with that information.
Yeah, really.
I do have a question, on remote participation in a committee? Do they have to get approval for remote participation at every single meeting? Or can they get it, vote on it, and every time they have a meeting, they can have remote participation?
The chairman makes that decision.
At each meeting?
Yes.
What happens if the meeting doesn't have a quorum? They can't do anything?
You have to have a quorum in order to open a meeting, to have participation.
So if they, okay.
Okay, so if you don't have a quorum present, you can't have remote participation anyway. But typically, what happens is that they usually ask the chairman ahead of time, and say, "Look, on next meeting, I won't be there, can I remote participate?" And typically, the chair will say, "Yeah, I think we can set it up," and they do.
But you have to vote it as a board?
Yeah, you have to vote it as a board, but you vote-
But if they vote it once-
You vote remote participation one time.
Right.
And then you can-
And then each-
Then it's up to the chair to make, to make, to make the call, whether it's-
It has to be ahead of time, in a prior, in an earlier meeting, because they can't do it if there's no quorum.
You can't do it if there's no quorum at the meeting, correct?
At the meeting, so if somebody is short a person, they can't-
Doesn't help.
It cannot be accommodating as a remote, because they don't have a quorum to make that call by the chair to open the meeting.
It doesn't help, go ahead.
The remote member doesn't count towards the quorum in the room. The quorum has to be in the room to open the meeting in the first place. So you can't have a semi, just to do the math, we're a five-man board. If two of us were here, and I decided to call in and make three, it doesn't work.
Okay.
Because they have to be three here to open the meeting, physically present, to even entertain my request for remote participation.
Okay, so the person who's doing on a remote cannot be counted toward a quorum?
No, correct, correct.
Okay. Oh, and one more thing, sorry. As you pick up your nip bottles, I want you to remember how you voted on the expanded bottle bill a couple years ago. If you had voted for the expanded bottle bill, each one of those nip bottles would have been five cents for pickup, and the water bottles. So think about how you voted a couple years ago for the expanded bottle bill as you pick up the nips and the water bottles. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak to us this evening? Come on down, sir.
Good evening, Bill Lockwood from the onset Blues Festival. Just wanted to add, in Mrs. Whiteside's comments, she, conspicuous in its absence was Little Ed and the Imperials, who are headliners. And we'd miss if we didn't mention them. They're coming all the way from Chicago to play for us, and they've put on a really great show.
I apologize.
Apologies, not necessary, gave you another opportunity to flog the show. Hope we can all make it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just tell us who you are, sir, and where you're from, please.
All of UNEA for onset.
Okay.
I just, a matter of curiosity about the street sweeping, if it's done every year, if it's, how much of it is done? There are three main entrances coming into onset, and it does not seem like they did any of those three roads completely. Maybe I'm wrong on that, but I know that, you know, like, out to the Grassy Bridge Inn, that much of that road was not done. So if it's not done, why isn't it done? And should we think about street sweeping, especially after a bad winter with all that snow and all that sand? My feeling is, you know, we should do a better job if we can.
Okay, I know that one of the reasons that we are having a difficult time getting to all the streets is because it was such a tough winter, and we used a lot of sand. So it's been made very difficult. They can't just do the road once, they've got to go over it and over it to get it all up on each road, so they're doing the best they can. But maybe the town administrator could weigh in on this one.
I wouldn't know why they're missed.
They should have been done?
There's no, there's no purpose for anything to be missed. Onset, we did pay a private company to come in using the kiosk money to do the area, so what we need help with is, a lot of times, I remember somebody told me that Main Ave had not been hit, so we had that, had them come back and do it. So anytime there's an issue like that, we should yearly, in May, have the sweepers come in, private companies now, that we pay through the kiosk money. So if you see areas that have not been hit, please let us know, and I'll have them come in.
Well, and somebody should definitely, after they finish it, well, look, because they did miss a lot. My wife and I probably removed more sand than they did.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Come on, come on down.
Kathy Judd, Queen of Independence.
Can you pull this to you, please? Because they don't work that great.
And state your name again, because I don't think you've picked up- Kathy Judd, thanks. And I was wondering if you have developed any more of a plan for the trash in onset? I know that several residents went down and spoke to the town administrator, and you folks were thinking of different ways, and I just wondered if you've gotten anywhere. I'm not sure if you realize, the volunteers that work in this village, that cleaned the Grassy Bridge this past weekend, removed all the litter, removed all the shrubs, the weeds, and a truckload of sand. The pier, they've gone over and cleaned up the pier, trash, weeds, planted flowers, and it's just, it's almost too much for the volunteers, and we don't seem to be getting any help. And the trash, truckloads of trash go to the dump, that nobody seems to realize. Even now, the parking tickets are being thrown into the street.
I know that we spent, I don't know, a whole weekend picking up tons of trash all over town. We had groups everywhere.
Yep.
But we have trash in, trash out, and we're trying to get people on board now.
It's not working.
Just so you know, I was in Martha's Vineyard this weekend, this week, last past week, and it was interesting, because they have signs as you enter the beach, that say "Trash in, trash out." They have a sign right there. And I went on to the beach and came off, and I went on several times, and we picked up our stuff and we left. And every day I went to that beach, and I want to tell you, there was no trash on the beach. The beach was completely cleaned every single day. So it can happen, and, you know, just because people are irresponsible, doesn't mean we should allow them to be irresponsible. And maybe we have to start looking at higher fines, and maybe somebody policing the individuals that are throwing the trash around.
This is the third year trash in and trash out. It's not working. And some people will carry it up and bring it to the top of the stairs, but then the gulls get in the bags, because there's no place to pick it up. I know in Sarasota, the beaches, which are all free, and the parking is free, and I, this is not against the parking, I think the parking fee is fine. Every single day, somebody, this man comes, he has his own truck, and he's a subcontractor for the town, and he picks up every day along all the beach access. If you don't have enough staff, maybe in the summer, from June to September, you subcontract it out. It cannot be that much. Use kiosk money. The money that's brought into onset is the jewel. We have more visitors here, and this weekend is going to be crazy. Thank God, folks swept the bridge, because all those bicyclists would have fallen off their bikes if there was so much sand. Nobody seems to be paying attention. The weeds along by the bandshell, where you're going to have the Blues Festival, the weeds along the sidewalk, along the road, it's disgusting. It's filled with cigarette butts, it's filled with little parking tickets. It's, have somebody drive around and look. And the volunteers that we have, that do a tremendous amount of work, it's too much. You know, we have our fundraisers, everything we do, we had some trees pruned, everything that we do comes out of the volunteers, the OBA, out of people that donate. So, I mean, we do a lot, and we need some help from the town.
And we appreciate that, believe me. We have nine municipal maintenance employees, nine. You have more volunteers than we have municipal maintenance employees. So it's, it's very difficult, and we're doing the best we can, and we will continue to do the best we can.
Even, what about the vendors in town? Why don't they have, if they sell ice cream, why can't they have a barrel there, so people, when they have little kids, can throw their cups in the barrels? Does it, the health department that would need to get on that? I mean, people have nowhere, they have two little kids, and you buy them ice cream and napkins, and they look around and they go, they don't have a pocket, so what, they sit it down by a bench? At least have the stores and the restaurants have barrels.
Something we could just-
Between Crossback Street going on to South Boulevard, the residence-only sign has been taken down. Why, could you explain to me why that one section's been taken down?
Yeah, that, that I don't know. And you know what? I will write a note, and I will see if I can find out, and if you want, after the meeting, if you give me your number, I'll try to find out, and I'll get it to, get you the information.
The gentleman that was doing the ticketing had said that I should come to the selectmen and ask them.
Yeah, and that's a good question, but I don't have the answer, so-
But it was up there for probably a week or two, and that was-
And I'm sorry to interrupt, it's the road commissioners that make the decisions on that, not the Board of Selectmen, so we would have to see what they did at their last meeting.
I was told to come to you people and ask, so I'd just like to know, all of onset is, on South Boulevard, all-
I will find out for you, if you-
Shell point is all-
If you come to me, after the meeting, give me your name and your number, I will check and find out what the road commissioners are doing relevant to that, and I'll call you and let you know, okay?
Thank you very much.
Yep. Next, come on down, sir.
Bill Judd, onset?
Hi, Bill.
I have a question about the parking, and I believe it's on North Boulevard, by the boat loading. There's signs there saying, "Permit parking only." We've been told on a couple of occasions by, what do I say, the harbor master, that it's okay to park there. And on other occasions, there's been tickets on those cars. And if, what happens is, is half the time they get ticketed, and half the time they don't get ticketed. And there should be some kind of a clarification as to whether those people can park their cars and trailers there while we use that boat ramp.
Okay, just so you know, like, like he had said before, as far as the parking control, we have no, no authority over that, it's the road commissioners.
I understand that.
And I don't have an answer for you, because I don't know what the setup is from, from the road commissioners, to be quite frank with you. And so I would have to get, try to get some of that information. But I would also suggest that all of you that have these issues with particular roads and signage, that you go to one of the road commissioner meetings, watch for the postings, they're, they're posted like any other meeting, you'll see them online and other places, and go to one of those meetings and actually ask those questions, because they're the ones who can really answer that.
Do you have the answer as to who is responsible for saying, "This is permit parking, and this is not"?
Road commissioners, road commissioners. Has nothing to do with the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
The town chose to separate it from us. We were, once upon a time, road commissioners, and they chose to separate it and give it to another board. So now that the other board has that authority.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Five years.
Yeah, like five years ago, right. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. All right, appointments, please.
Yes, we have an appointment of a registrar of voters, and the recommendation is to appoint Marcia Rossman of Post Office Box 1423, onset, Mass. 02558, as registrar of voters to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Second. Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any, anybody wishing to speak about it? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0. Next?
The recommendation is to appoint Elizabeth Lyden of 4 Marsh Avenue, New Bedford, Mass. Yeah, it says... She's currently an associate member, so we would be, she couldn't be an associate member unless she was a Wareham resident.
Right.
So I will get the address corrected, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that earlier today.
Okay.
My motion then is to appoint Elizabeth Lyden of Wareham, Massachusetts, as a member of the Conservation Commission for the town of Wareham, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion?
Just, just a note that Ms. Lyden is currently an associate member of the Conservation Commission.
Okay, so noted.
And confirmation of her address.
No, she couldn't be-
This fails by operational law, she's under arrest.
So noted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
I have a constable reappointment. Move that we appoint Joseph Latimer of 388 County Street, New Bedford, Mass., and that's okay, as a constable for the town of Wareham, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2016.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
Next, we have licenses and permits from Dudley Brown. We have a request for two all-day, all-alcoholic beverages. First one is July 28th, 2015, Dudley L. Brown Post 2846 VFW, care of Paul Rose, 4 Gibbs Ballpark Road, onset, for August 15th and August 22nd, 2015. The hours on August 15th will be between 12:00 noon and 8:00 PM. The hours on August 22nd will be between 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM. The premises are the onset VFW Pavilion, the outdoor area of the VFW, sales for all alcoholic beverages, no alcoholic beverages to be consumed on town property.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion?
And I will make Mr. Holmes', sorry.
Mr. Holmes usually always reminds of the VFW-
I was just going to say-
By his, by his nature to make sure that all alcohol, et cetera, that's served in the pavilion, his inventory is separately, is kept separate from the regular stock. Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Now, vote.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0. Thank you. All right, next up, any other town business not really reasonably anticipated in 48 hours prior to the posting of the meeting?
Just one item, I'd like to get onto the agenda over the next couple of weeks or so. Sometime back, I believe, former town administrator, Mr. Andrews, with that board at that time, that board gave certain parts of their responsibility of CEDAR over to the town administrator. I think people think that because the boards have changed, things reverse back. I believe, in check with town council, that this board has to vote if they want to take those, those particular pieces back that we gave out. So I'd like to schedule that for the agenda.
I'll bring it up as an agenda item, but I believe that one board cannot tie the hands of another board. Whatever their powers and duties are, they maintain those unless they choose to vote them away.
But they did vote them away, that's the problem.
Well, they did, but it would revert with us, anyway, we wouldn't have to vote it back.
No, because you have-
And we'd have to actually vote that every single year.
Yeah, I think we'd have to get a ruling on that.
But we'll do that, and I'll put it on the next agenda. I'll try to do it on the next one, if that's okay with you.
That'd be great.
Okay, you got it.
I have a ban.
A ban agreement?
Ban.
Did you have to sign it?
Oh, okay, there's bans, yeah.
Bans.
It's not on the agenda.
I know.
Okay, 24 hours?
Yep. May I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. This is to authorize the signature of the selectmen to sign a Commonwealth of Massachusetts Town of Wareham Bond Anticipation Note, commonly known as ban, for $500,000, which is renewal money. This note is exempt from taxation in Massachusetts, date of issue July 31st, 2015. This note is exempt taxation in Massachusetts, date of issue July 31st, 2015. I move that we sign as required and we will swear and attest to the fact that it is our free act of will.
Second. Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
It is my free act of will.
Free act of will.
She'll, she'll, go ahead.
You, Thomas, please, this is your signature, that you freely, willingly sign these documents for purpose of case.
I do.
Okay. All right, any other 24-hour business? Peter?
No.
Derek?
No.
No. All right, we'll move on from that. Town administrators, report, please.
Very simple, and after what seems like the world's longest service call, Comcast has come and set up the internet at Spiny Library, so we are...
Yay!
It was the longest service call.
So, that is taken care of.
Longest service call.
And that, that's really all, we'll save the updates for the next meeting.
Okay.
Just so you know, Selectman Whiteside wanted me to void the contract with them that we just executed for the next 10 years over this issue, so I'm glad it's taken care of.
Yeah, me too. All right, let's see. Liaison reports, Mr. Titlebaum, you're up.
I want to say, last week, Selectman Whiteside and I both went to the Board of Health meeting. There was a lengthy discussion, continued discussion, on the issue of adopting regulations to regulate the length of hotel motel stays. It was quite a bit of discussion centered around documents provided by the Dartmouth Health Agent, who was in attendance and gave a lot of background as to how they went about it. It was kind of a blended approach between both the Board of Health adopting regulations as they have the legal authority to do on their own and also through town bylaw. So, we're gonna be working with town council, Selectman Whiteside and I, to go through those and give our thoughts to the Board of Health on, you know, what's, what's the good, what's the bad, what's the ugly here? Because they are looking to try to get this done sometime by the end of the year.
Good, bad, and the ugly is that Mr. Bowen, Mr. Ethier, and myself sat down in your absence and the draft, draft is now back in Ethier and Bowen's hands and I'd be happy to send you a copy, I forgot a lot of it.
Okay, then.
It is done.
Anything else?
Today, Chairman Troppiano and I had the pleasure of meeting Lieutenant Governor in Bessie Park. She was there to formally award the town $825,000 in community development block grant money. Frankly, being the recipient of that money is a mixed bag. It's great to get the money, however, it's also an acknowledgement by the state that your community needs the help, outside help, if you will. And so, this is the second time she's been to Wareham in the past couple of months. She seems to like it here. She seems to be very engaged and interested in the town. She was pushing some ideas on us that she and the Baker administration have to make it easier for communities to compete for grants, engage in processes with the state government. I have to say, in the short time, even though I'm a Democrat, I'm really pleased with the outreach that this Republican administration has made to the cities and towns. It's been quite a change from what we saw with the prior administration.
Mr. Slavon, please.
As I started to say earlier, the MPO, which basically does the transportation programs to southeast Mass, met today and they formulated the plans for 2016, 2017, 18, 19, are plans listed, including ours, 6 and 28. We're a little nervous because monies are in place for 2016, monies are not yet in place going forward after that. We'll see how that works out. We'll hope for the best, but there are some issues there. The CEC was supposed to meet on Monday, unfortunately, there was no quorum, so they weren't able to meet to work on how they're gonna do distribution of their funds for the different events. Planning Board also met on Monday this week. Bay Point, the project there, which has, I think, about 90 units or so between condominiums and houses. The house unit, lot sizes, I think, were finally more or less worked out and agreed to. The actual condominium units, the duplexes and the quads, there's some differences that have to be worked out there, I'm not sure how that's gonna work. This particular project requires a supermajority of the planning board for approval, which means four out of five members have to vote yes. So, it's a, it's gonna be interesting to see how that all works out. The railroad, we've asked the railroad, basically, if they think that the shrubbery and growth behind merchants way is getting excessive again, they would come in at no cost to the town and clean it all like they did two years ago. And hopefully, that will happen there as well. And the other piece, which I didn't bring up when Mrs. Judd asked about trash, I am working with CMAS and a couple contracts with CMAS for a long-term trash program for Wareham, but until I have solid details, it doesn't do me any good to promise anything. That's it.
All right. Ms. Whiteside?
I didn't mean to cut off Mr. Titlebaum. He had set a date for later on in the day and Mr. Bowen was available and Mr. Ethier was available, so that's, I apologize.
No, it's great when other people do the work.
Yeah. I attended a meeting in Mr. Slaven's absence at the historic district commission for a certificate of appropriateness for the WCTV expansion. There was lengthy debate as well as a very clear presentation and the information has been tabled until August something.
15th.
15th or something? Yeah, so that there can be, yeah, more specific information provided to the commission. I think that they were receptive to the idea. The cemetery commissioners met last week and one of the visitors to the commission's meeting was Mr. White from the Veterans Council, who had a question about the indices of where people are buried, particularly in the ancient section of the graveyards, the two main graveyards, cemeteries. And unfortunately, there were fires, there was water damage, so some of our records are incomplete. On behalf of the Veterans Council, I would urge you, if you have a loved one who is buried in Wareham and who was a veteran, to contact Mr. White as the Veterans Council, because we will make sure that that person's grave is annotated and that he or she receives a flag on the next decoration day. I don't think I had any spare time other than that.
Okay.
So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just want to say, I did get to meet with the Lieutenant Governor today and I have to say a couple of things. One, I think our cedar folks are doing a pretty good job. We've got the grant a couple of years running and got, you know, really got some stuff going, so that's really a good thing for us. I mean, the money really helps a lot of things, as you know, Main Street got done. Now we have other areas that are gonna get down, there's some, there's a bunch of things on the new list and one of them is the parking lot over here, which is, we're gonna see what happens with that. But we're gonna try to do something with that. And some other things that are in the grant, which is kinda nice. So, it helps a lot. The other thing I wanted to mention was that I have to commend Karen Polito because we walked Main Street because it was at Bessie Park and that was the easiest place that we had already done some work and spent some money on. And she was pleased as punch what we had done and, you know, so on. But the interesting thing was, is that she would talk and she was very engaged with us. And she asked questions, she seemed to know what was going on in our community. I mean, really, no. She had stuff that, I was thinking, oh, you know about that? You know what I mean? Like, is, you don't usually hear from these types of politicians. You know what I mean? Usually, they're kinda talking over you, or looking behind you, or, you know, like, okay, let me in and out of here. But she wasn't like that at all and I was, I just, I'm very impressed with her, her ability to really know what's going on. I mean, I think this, this is gonna be good, it's certainly good for Wareham, she's been here twice already. I don't think we've seen anyone else here in years, have we? Not that I know of. So, I just wanna thank the Baker-Polito administration for taking so much. And I, you know, and I gotta say one more thing. I think this guy over here has a lot to do with that, I just want you to know. Because he's always engaged with these folks, right? He's always at the meetings, he's always doing stuff. And because of him, I think it plays a big role in, in them paying attention to us. I mean, he's there. You know, he's always in their face, so to speak.
Pain in the ass.
You know, it's like, you know, the greasy, what's it, the oily, whatever gets the grease, you know? Or the noisy, whatever it is, whatever that saying is, that I can't remember, 'cause I'm too old to remember those guys. Whatever it happens to be. Chicken, whatever, whatever it happens to be. But it's really nice that they're paying attention to us. You know, how could we ask for more, you know? So, I just needed to say a little bit about that today. It was kind of fun walking the street and, you know, listening to them and so on and it was really nice. All right, next up is the consent agenda and discussion with the Marine Resource Commission's Harbor Management Plan. Come on down, gentlemen, if you could grab seats over here for us, please? That'd be wonderful. Yeah, where the microphones are?
Where the microphones are, that'd be great.
I'm Don Jepson, Chairman of Marine Resources.
How you doing, Don?
Larry Burse, who I asked to come to the meeting and we also have Jim Stitt, who's a member of the Marine Resources Commission here.
All three of you, if you'd like, that way...
All three of you, she can come over, just grab another chair and slide it over.
Don't be shy, gentlemen, it'll hurt you.
I don't know, I don't know...
Keep it for yourself.
Just to give you an update, we...
Judy bites, but we don't.
That our current members of the Marine Resources Commission were not the authors of the Harbor Management Plan, which, as you can see, is voluminous and has not been read by too many people since it was produced. It was the first Harbor Management Plan that was done in Massachusetts for the towns and so it, it's a very noteworthy presentation that was done. Unfortunately, there's so much detail in here, when those of us who came on as new members, we took a look at it and we tried to go through it and try to update it and take a look at each of the charts and each, to find out if there was additional information. And that basically is our charter to advise the selectmen, but one of the, the carryovers from the previous members was to update this part. And we struggled for a year because we didn't have enough people to meet a quorum, as Sandy was referring to. And last year, about a year ago, we had two additional members and then Larry joined us, was it in January or just prior to that?
Yes.
Yeah, around the beginning of the year. And one of the advantages of having new members is that people come in and they take another look at it. And when I first looked at it, we were just sort of following what had been done previous to this and unfortunately, we had the same success or the same result, I should say, or lack of success in updating this. And when Larry joined us, he took a look at it and I gave him a copy of this and he went through it and he said, "We really need to streamline this because it's really, it's, there's a lot of interesting and worthwhile information in here, but as soon as it's published, it's outdated." And that's where, why we're here now, is because Larry had come up with an approach and I had given advance copies, I don't know if all the selectmen had seen those or...
We hadn't seen them.
Or not, but basically, what it is trying to do is to take this document and then provide people with an index of places that they can go to get this information, because if we followed suit with what was done previously, what's gonna happen, as soon as it's published, it's gonna be outdated again. And so, one of the other members who's on the Marine Resources Committee, he said, "Well, that's in line with what people are trying to do now, is to minimize the amount of pulp that you have and basically allow people to have a live document where they can go to it to get information." And essentially, that's what, when Larry went through this, what he did is he went through the index and then he's provided in the back of that, resources that where people can go to get this information. And then, not only will it save the town a lot of money in trying to, because this was done by an engineering firm, I don't know what it cost when it was done.
$50,000.
Fifty? That was 20 years ago?
Yeah, so that's...
So, the cost today would be...
$1.50.
More.
Well, this one costs zero, so far.
Yeah.
If you don't like it, it'll cost more.
Well, I know Derek will like it, in terms of saving money. We, in fact, we did take a pass at trying to, before Larry came on last year, of trying to see if there was a grant available to try to get this updated and what we ran into was the only ones that we came into were reimbursement grants, which meant you have to spend the money upfront and then get reimbursed for it later on, assuming that you could get the grant. And for that reason, because of the fiscal situation in the town, we haven't done that. But essentially, the reason we're here before you is to ask your, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, to look it over, see if you can agree with the approach that we're trying to take, because, you know, our purpose in being in existence is to basically advise the, the selectmen on matters concerning the harbor and everything else, but one of the things we get bogged down in is trying to update this document, which is, you know, as I said, was, was very worthwhile having been done once. But if you can send somebody who's looking for information to, that's in here, there are sources, Larry's identified them, if not, you know, some of them are identified through the Harbor Master and, and all of the members are in agreement with this approach as well as, is the Harbor Master, so...
Go ahead.
I was actually on that committee back, feels like a long, long time ago, probably. I think it was the first committee I ever was on with the town. At that time there, there was Frank Tremontosi, Frank O'Brien, were on there, myself, Dave Begley came on board. We actually rewrote the whole plan and had it all done. Our problem was the town had no funding for someone to sit there and transcribe all the notes and all the changes. The information you get, you have to go to different sources for the different graphs, charts, et cetera, and they're always two or three years old when they put them out in the first place. So if it takes you a couple of years to do it, by the time you produce something, almost all the information's five years old or more anyways. The very touchy part of the whole thing was, there was a Harbor Management Plan included with that particular document going back. The original one, that one there, actually had that in it and they pulled it out because they were concerned about the selectmen at the time, unfortunately, not being happy about losing control of how the harbor is run, et cetera, because that Harbor Management Plan was actually gonna take care of anything to do along the waterfront. And I think you have, from what I did before, you have a whole plan, actually was put together all written out as well. Very difficult thing to try and implement because it's very politically sensitive. If the board wants, I'd be more than happy to work with you guys on it, because I spent, I'm gonna say 500 hours minimum on this already before.
Okay.
And it's easy, I know where everybody has to go. I used to be on the Division Marine Fisheries, I was one of the nine fishery commissioners for the state of Massachusetts on the marine side, so we have all the contacts available, et cetera.
Right, essentially, what was done 20 years ago was to compile all this information from a different bunch of sources.
Yep, most of those sources.
Put it in a binder.
But they, they actually hired a firm, the firm's name is in there, they, the town somehow came up with a $50,000 grant and it made it a lot easier, because when we went to do this originally, we just didn't have the access to go find the information that that firm did. Because that firm actually sat down and generated probably a third of the information on their own.
Right, but what's happened, what's happened now is the internet.
Oh, yeah.
20 years ago, wasn't that active, people were really, but now, you can get access to information at the touch of a fingertip, rather than having to go to the library or scan through documents in a, in a room somewhere, I mean, it's all readily available.
Well, I don't disagree, I think the concept you're gonna do, which is a streamline, to let people take that information, go search out, is fine.
Right.
But if you want some help, this board would be more than happy to do it.
I think all we're asking, just to review what we, what we're presenting and give us a nod if you approve, so that we can go ahead and enter that into our files as a working document.
My answer is yes, 'cause I've already looked at it.
Okay.
The rest of the board has to answer them.
Right, so that's, it's easy to update?
Yeah.
And keep heard? Costs nothing?
Ms. Whiteside.
I love it, guys. Kiss, keep it simple.
Keep it simple, stupid.
Okay. I had the opportunity to look at it, and then actually.
You're stupid.
I said, "Sweetie," not stupid. You told me to be nice last week, sorry.
It's only for a week, though.
Yeah. I think it's an absolutely wonderful document. I think going from this, this is fabulous. This, in my opinion, should go right up on the website under your link in its entirety, and I didn't find any typos. I didn't find any typos. I'm really good at that. I think it's great that you put it together. And that the information is current, that it is a living document, that it moves forward faster than you and I will. So thank you very much for the work that you did, notwithstanding Mr. Slaven's offer. He doesn't have any free time, and I forbid you to volunteer for anything else. Do you understand?
No.
And your wife also seconded that motion, so maybe we all vote in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Doesn't work that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Looks good to me. Good work, thank you.
May I make that motion?
Yeah, hold on. Okay, so, yeah, I believe it or not, I remember when this was being done, I was around that far back and further, and I remember when it came in front of us, me, later on, when I became a selectman, which was 2001, 2000 somewhere. And I remember we implemented portions of it, but not the entire document, because it was very difficult to take that and digest the whole thing, and I actually read the whole thing back then, believe it or not. And there's also another document floating around here called the master plan, which I read many times as well, and it's floating around, but most of those things end up get in a closet or someplace and never get done. So this is a great idea. Get them, all this stuff should get up online, not to mention, it's easy to change. Once you get it scanned in, once you get it, whatever, it's easy to go in and say, "Okay, we voted to move this piece, do this piece," or whatever, and it's always up to date for people, so I'm totally in favor of this. I think this is a terrific idea.
So may I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
Yes. I'd call them actually spark notes, you know, what you're doing. And as a teacher, if I handed a child that, he or she would vomit, and if I handed them this, they would go, "Oh, I can't do that." So congratulations, gentlemen. I move that the Marine Resources Commission Harbor Management Plan and Information, as presented by the commissioner, harbor management, by the Marine Resources Commission, be adopted and posted on the Internet for, with appropriate links to the Town of Wareham, and thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it, appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up.
Now that you have a lot of spare time, we do have vacancies on other boards and commissions. I'm really good at that, so, you know, you know where to find us.
All right, discussion and possible vote on town meeting warrant articles now. This is on here, because it's going to, you're going to see it on the agenda right along from now on, because there are ones that we're getting ready, and we're going to talk about them as it goes, as we get them, as we do them, we're going to start to talk about them. I do have, I have the cutoff date. I know we don't have any ready, but I do have the, what do you call it? Hold on, let's see. There you go. So I just wanted everybody to be aware that this will be constantly there, so if, as you're working through these, because the quicker we can get them to the committees, and the quicker we get dealt with them, and we get them off to where they need to go, the better off it's going to be for everybody.
The last thing for us, as far as putting on the warrant or not, as far as.
September 15.
Yeah, September 15. So that's not very far.
So it happens relatively quickly, so that's what we're planning on doing.
And the last day, I think, to submit petition articles is September 10, and I think it's August, actually, August 13.
13.
For any non-petition article.
Right.
That's our internal deadline, our internal policy, is that, as it so happens, we manage to break that policy just about every single time, but that's.
We'll try.
We set a goal.
We'll try, that's our goal, so we'll try and make it happen. All right, is there anything else to be said?
Nope.
All right, there's no documents or bills to pay? All right then, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion submitted.
Motion made.
Before we call for that vote.
Yes.
I'd just like to reiterate Mr. Troppiano's comments. This was a really pleasant venue to have a meeting in. The air conditioning is perfect, the water is perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Troppiano, for coming up with the idea of the moving selectmen.
Yes.
Make us a better target.
Thank you to our hosts. Thank you, Nicole.
Yeah, you know, I want to say one more thing, too, yeah. You know, I've always felt there was, we had the meetings always in the same place, and years ago, I had thought that this was a good idea, and it just never happened, because it just seems like sometimes it's a disconnect with people from different areas, whether it's West Wareham, or Onset, or there's downtown, or whatever, there's a disconnect, because it's like, we're in the ivory tower over there, so to speak, you know, and everybody thinks that we're something special. But we're just people like you, and we try to do the best we can with the information we get. That's all we are. Each one of us are nothing but citizens of this town, that walk around, we got all the problems that everybody else has, we, all the issues that go on with everybody else, and then we come here, and as a group, we try to make good decisions, and that's all